Call this meeting in order at 5:40, the city schools meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, council member Adkin.
Here.
School board member Effelt.
Here.
Council member Asher. Council member Brinkman.
Here.
Council member Davis.
Here.
Council member West is excused. School board member Simon. School board member Kent. School board member Dice. School board member Dwin. Shall I call the two new members?
Yes.
Okay. Student member Carr.
Here.
And student member Seth.
Here.
All right, we, member Adkin and I have an official swearing in ceremony that we'd like to conduct with our, with our new student members. Member Adkin, why don't you do, member Seth, and I'll do member-
Oh, you could do it together, in unison, okay.
You want to do that?
All right.
Do it together.
So, in both-
Please stand.
In both, in both school board and city council meetings, when we get sworn in as officers, like mayor and vice mayor, or the board of trustees, president, or whatever, we have to stand and raise our right hands. So this is your, I don't know if you've ever had a swearing in before, but this is going to be short and sweet. It's not the official one, we're just, we just made this up right now. So, I will break this down in small parts, then you just repeat after me. So you want to raise your right hand? Aye, and then put in your name.
Aye. Aye, Jasmin Carr.
Okay. Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and diligently-
That I will faithfully and diligently-
Fulfill my duties on the city schools committee-
Fulfill my duties on the city schools committee.
From now until graduation into the great unknown.
(laughter) Thank you.
Congratulations, you're now members.
I think, I think our bylaws say we have to actually vote you in, but we don't have a quorum, so, but thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, the next-
We can't do public comment.
Yeah, agenda item is public comment. Do we have any members of the public who wish to comment on any agenda item, any item not in the agenda? Seeing none.
Move approval of the minute.
We can't, we don't have a quorum.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have a quorum, so we're not going to move approval of the minutes. We will proceed those to staff and committee member comments. Any members of staff?
Yes, thank you. Let's see, I just want to let the, let the public know a couple of big events that are coming up. We have a winter concert, art and music showcase. It's, we want to thank our partner Cliff Bar. It's in their gallery on December 19th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. They have a chance to see some of the fabulous art of our students, including DeeDee and Jasmin, which should be kind of nice, and, and also the performance from the jazz band, and also the, the guitar club. So it's going to be a lot of fun, and we encourage all of you to come out. And there's some flyers, some postcards that are over on the counter there for anyone that is interested in attending. In addition to that, Annie Yates is having an assembly. The Oakland Symphony is, will be performing at the school on the 20th at, I believe, 9:30, but if anyone is, I'll, we'll make sure that it's posted on our website to give you the exact time. And I want to publicly thank one of our dear community members, Marsalyn Krafcek, our COC member, who made the generous donation to make this assembly possible. So thank you very much, Marsalyn. I also wanted to send out a big thank you to our IT director, Ryan Choate, and his assistant, Alex Aguilar, for formatting and delivering new laptop computers and laptop carts. We've ordered new laptop carts for our teachers in classrooms last week. This technology that is being generously paid for by the parcel tax is going to go a long way to getting our teachers and our students up to speed and prepared for the new smarter balance assessments, so I just wanted to thank the community for that. Let's see, later on in the evening, I'll, we'll have a chance to go over and introduce to you Dave Gallagher, who is going to be our interim project manager, who will be taking our outgoing project manager, our retiring project manager, Roy Miller's position. But we'll do that later on this evening. But I did want everyone to know that, that work is moving along. Dave is on board, and the transition has begun, and we're really grateful to have him. Let's see, what else did I want to tell you? Oh, we had a terrific COC joint study session with the board at our last board meeting to go over, to go over Roy Miller's transition, and also just have a chance to have the board and for the COC to ask any questions that they had about the transition. And it was a very upbeat, very positive meeting that is one, I think, to be remembered and also to be modeled for the future. I'm sure Tom will talk a little bit about there and give some highlights about that meeting later on, but just again, wanting the community to know just how positive that, that meeting was. And I think that's it for now.
Yeah. Roy, go ahead.
I have one quick one. I just wanted the city schools committee to know that the construction project is moving forward. The abatement work that had begun about six weeks ago at the secondary school site, the future ECL site, is now coming to a close. That should be wrapped up next week, and the week following that, the week just prior to the holidays for the school district, we should actually see the beginnings of buildings coming down on the site, existing buildings coming down. The demolition work is slated to start with the old district office buildings that are closest to the 53rd and San Pablo corner, and then it'll work its way down San Pablo Avenue, and then turn the corner and, and start proceeding down 47th toward the existing gym. And all that should be occurring starting in December and then through the month of January. And I just wanted to let everybody know that that's about to happen.
And, and on that note, I think it's important to let everyone know that the cornerstone celebration that we had hoped to have as part of the abatement and demolition project with the lease leaseback position that our contractor is in and taking over the facility, there's a lot of work going on there that would be, could be problematic as far, as far as doing a demolition ceremony. So we are going to be doing a groundbreaking ceremony sometime in March, and we'll let everyone know about the date of that and advertise that in very, you know, very, very clear and communicated order in terms of the timeline, so that folks can put it on their calendar. But the, the demolition party is, would not be able to happen, so, but you will see work happening.
And real quick, our city news and activity guide for the winter-spring was mailed out, so hopefully everyone got one in the mail, and if not, stop by one of our city offices and pick one up, and I've left some over there on the counter also.
Any other city staff comments? Any board or council member comments? Seeing none, and seeing that we now have a quorum.
Move approval of the minute.
Remember Dice here?
Second.
Any discussion, approval of the minutes? Any objections to approval of the minutes? Hearing none, by acclamation, the minutes are approved. Onto information items. First item is our standing item of the EUSD campus report from our student members.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yeah.
Did I miss the staff comments?
You did. You can make a comment.
Well, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank all the city employees and the school district employees, and I want to thank the city manager for allowing all the city employees to come out to our Thanksgiving service day with ECAP. It was a huge success. We had over 20 employees from both agencies come out. We, I think we passed out over 300 to 400 gift baskets, so it was a huge success. Everyone had a great time, and I'm sorry I'm late, but I really wanted to make that and thank city manager as well as the employees. Oh yeah, and also, from the city standpoint, we had employees come out from finance department, the economic development department, the community service department, as well as the senior, the senior center. So you, you all had a great turnout, you know, and representation of a lot of the city employees, so I just want to thank all of you for that.
All right.
Thank you, Chair.
Do we have any report from our student members? Now, please.
So, right now, Emory Secondary Schools ASB is hosting a holiday clothes, food, and toy drive, which is taking place now on our ESS campus, and it will be ending on December 18th. So please drop off new or slightly used warm clothing, non-perishable food items, and new toys at 9:15, 54th Street, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. Also, Annie Yates ASB and Drama Club will be collecting canned goods, so please drop off those donations to Ms. Miles' class.
All sizes and ages of clothes, or, okay.
The Build 7th Annual Holiday Sales Bazaar was held on December 5th from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at the Scottish Rite Center in Oakland, where students from Emory successfully represented their school and sold their products.
ESS will be holding a holiday spirit week, which will take place between December 16th and December 20th, where students will discuss many ways the holidays are expressed through our diverse cultures, and they will be explored throughout our campus.
Annie Yates will be hosting a family art night on December 18th from 5:30 to 7:00
There will be an ESS PTO potluck and a senior white elephant gift exchange that will be taking place on Wednesday, December 18th, and 5:30 in Room 1 on the ESS campus.
As Ms. Lindo said earlier, ESS will be hosting an art and music showcase, which will be on December 19th, so please drop by if you all can.
Annie Yates ASB and PTO will host their annual winter dance on December 20th from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Emeryville Senior Center.
And lastly, we will be having a winter break, which will begin on December 20th, and it will end on January 6th, 2014.
Wow, there's a lot going on. That's very busy. Any, any report on athletics and how our various sports teams did this fall? Any highlights?
This fall, our boys soccer team actually made it to the semifinals of the state, of the Northern Regionals, and they won the league championships.
Wonderful. And our football team went to the playoffs, right?
Yes.
With a 7-3 record?
Yeah.
Excellent. Ms. Dunn, you have something to add?
Sounds like an heartfelt report.
From the gallery?
Just to let you know, too, our coaches, the football coaches, were voted by the Raiders as the most improved, and they received recognition in their Bay Area State with the Raiderettes. And it's not because of the winning, but because of the improvement of their academics for all of the students who are coming through.
Say that all?
Do I have to say that again?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the two coaches, Mr. Alexander and Mr. Wright, right?
Mm-hmm.
Both were coaches for our football team this year, and they won best improved for, from the Raiders. They gave them a certificate, and they also had the Raiderettes, they took pictures with the whole team and everything, but it was not so much because of their improvement in, well, it was their improvement in terms of, of sports, but it was also their improvement in terms of academics. So they really brought forth a team with very little money, very little, you know, anything, and they, they got these young men to move forward, so we're very proud of them.
Right.
And supposedly, they have some kind of a picture they're going to put up on our back fence.
They'll be, they'll be doing a presentation, the principal at the Wednesday board meeting as well, if people are interested in seeing the entire details of that.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Thank you for that addition, and thank you for that report. Do we have any public comments, any other public comments on the EUSD campus report? The next item is the Boss Foundation check presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Today, we have a special presentation that we're going to conduct, and I wanted to introduce one of our annual contributors, which is in the person of the Boss Foundation, and the person that heads that foundation is Dr. Warren Strudwick, who's here with me today. And he's going to give a little bit of information about their, his foundation and the work that they do, and then Juliet Dunn, the wellness director, is going to talk about this donation and what the funds are going to be used for. So let's welcome Mr. Strudwick, or Dr. Strudwick.
I'll just take this. Can everyone hear me? It's an honor to be here and to be able to present some support for education here in Emeryville. I've had my office here for approximately 10 years, and when we first arrived here, we made an allegiance with the Emeryville School District and made a commitment to contribute as much as we could to educational efforts and to promote fitness, both physical, physical fitness, intellectual fitness, and also spiritual fitness here in Emeryville. So we started the Boss Foundation, which is based, was based out of our practice, which is the Bay Area Orthopedic Sports and Spine at that time. And we decided that we would support youth activities and also some adult activities, because if you have fit adults, that sort of trickles down to fit youth. So we decided to think of an event to have, and we thought, well, why don't we, why don't we have a triathlon? And the feeling was, well, nobody's going to do a triathlon. Nobody's going to do that. Nobody likes to swim. It's too long. Well, why don't we make it really short?
Shortest.
And why don't we call it the shortest triathlon ever? And so that's what we did. So that was eight years ago, and we just ran the 7th, 7th Annual Triathlon, and it's, it's remarkable the effort that the, the total city of Emeryville put into this, including City Hall, the city council, the police department, the fire department, you know, Kevin's department, and all the departments of, of the city of Emeryville that had input into getting this well organized and giving us the ability to do this over and over again in an extremely cooperative way. We have police officers that volunteer their time, they come out on Saturday, block up the roads, control the traffic, the fire department comes out. It's just an incredible thing for the city. And I hope that we can continue it, I hope that it goes on and on. Only hitch that we had last year was that we had no pool, so it was the shortest ever duathlon instead of triathlon. And hopefully, hopefully, you know, the pool will, one of the projects, the pool will get finished. I'm sure that schedules get finished sometime in 2014, and usually the triathlon is in April of 2014, so if we could sort of push it, push it ahead of schedule a little bit, maybe we'll be able to have the triathlon this year. But if not, I'm sure that it will still be very successful, and one of the greatest things that we see out there at the triathlon is the kids, the little kids that come out there and, and compete. And it's something that, you know, you can't, you can't really replace in, in a kid's life, the sense of accomplishment of finishing something like that, coming to the finish line, getting your picture taken, and having people cheering for you after having accomplished something like this. And believe it or not, all the adults that participate, some of them are professionals who are sort of warming up for the whole triathlon season, and others are just people who wanted to do something like a triathlon, and the sense of accomplishment from it is tremendous. And if anyone, any of you have not been out there for the event, you should come out to the event, maybe do the event, maybe participate, bring your kids, bring kids that you know, bring their friends, bring family friends, and come out and participate in a great family event. We usually have a health fair associated with it, a little breakfast to go along with it, and an award ceremony afterwards. So this year, we're contributing $4,000.
All right.
To the Emory Education Foundation, and I guess we're going to find out exactly what this, what this money is going to do, and hopefully we'll be able to contribute an equal or greater amount next year, depending on what the participation is, and so I'm counting on everyone here in this room to assure that we have great participation in our event in April.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Boss Foundation and Dr. Strudwick.
He has been here with us, working on wellness from the beginning, and when they started talking about the triathlon about, and we looked at him and went, huh, what? But when he said it was the world's shortest, we said, okay, fine, we'd love to participate and benefit, and also join in. The first year, we did have some students from Emory, but we haven't quite figured out how to organize getting them together, so this year I'm going to be working with Kevin and the children at the rec center, where the Family Resource Center, which is part of Wellness Is, and we're going to get some teams together, maybe some of our athletic teams, to actually participate and represent Emory out there. Some of the things that we're going to plan to do with this money, first of all, is that we do have a Family Resource Center, which is for the families of Emeryville, and we're going to be working with our teens, as well as some of our elementary students in nutrition education. We're going to be looking at family classes that we have there. The money is also going to be used for wellness and some of the things that we have in the spring that's coming up. We want to do some nutrition education, we want to have a health fair, we're working with student leaders to put some of those, some of that on, and we desperately and wonderfully need this money and this cash infusion, because it's been a very interesting and difficult year, but because of gentlemen like him and all the other people who participated, we now can continue on with some of the things that we've been looking at. So I will definitely let you know exactly what we're going to do with it, and we're going to use the money very well for wellness and the students. And I feel, as everyone else, that we're so blessed to have people like you and everyone else helping us out, so thank you.
I would be amiss if I didn't mention this. This year was kind of special, because my, my son, who's standing over there, Alvin, stand up. Say, wait. Alvin helped, helped with the organization of the, of the triathlon, and he's really interested in sports operations and sports management, and this was a great entree for him to, to be a part of this and to, and to organize this, so I'm kind of proud of him that he, that he did it. He deserves a big hand for this year's event.
Thank you, Dr. Strudwick. So we're going to take a quick moment, if we have the permission of the chair, to take a quick picture officially.
Great.
And, yeah, I guess we'll, in the center maybe.
Stand in front.
Any of the ladies that could join us?
Thank you.
Kevin Laven from the Community Services Department. Just again, I wanted to thank Warren and Alvin, huge effort, and they did a great job, and we're so excited to have them as a partner. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the, the date, because it's my birthday, too, April 12th, 2014. In lieu of all the gifts you would send me, please just register for the event, come on out. I'll be there, we'll all be there. Come do a race, it's really fun. It starts at City Hall, Saturday, April 12th, 8:00 AM, so come on out. It's a great race. You can find registration info on the city's website, the school's website, the Warren's website for the sports doctors, so just please register, and even if you can't be there, for some reason you're not able to participate, a lot of the funding that was able to be donated is through sponsors or people who just wanted to give to, to the event in lieu of being able to race, so lots of options to participate. We look forward to seeing you in 2014. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Warren, I did actually participate a couple years back, and, but for the world's slowest transition time, getting out of my shoes, into my running shoes, I would have medaled. So, I was that close to, to my only triathlon medal, so it's a good opportunity to-
The shortest, the shortest triathlon.
To get a good time.
We didn't meddle.
Yeah. But work on transition.
That's cute. Very cute.
Any public comment on, on this last item?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none. Mr. Powell, we have the update from the Emory Ed Fund.
Recently, the Ed Fund received a donation from Dave Martinez in the amount of $840, and those funds will be earmarked for our scholarship program. And thank you to Dave Martinez, who is no longer resident of Emeryville, but still very active and strong supporter of the Emory Ed Fund and our work. I'd also like to thank Emeryville community member Andy Getz for his recent multi-year commitment of $1,000 a year to the Emory Ed Fund. Also, special thanks to Henry Dur and his recent donation of $1,000 to the Ed Fund. Thank you, Henry and Andy, for your continued support. And of course, we know, special thanks to Dr. Warren Strudwick and the Boss Foundation for the donation of $4,000 to the Emory Ed Fund that has been earmarked for EUSD wellness programs. These funds were generated from the continued supporters of the annual shortest triathlon that takes place here in Emeryville. I would like to thank our partners, At Nothing Bunk Cakes, for their in-kind donation through the Emory Ed Fund of 100 mini bunk cakes for December 20th to the Annie Yates Elementary School for their winter ball. Thanks to Kami and Alisa at Nothing Bunk Cakes in Emeryville. The Emory Ed Fund is being featured as a nonprofit of the month in January by Farley's Cafe here in Emeryville. You can go to Farley's located at 1195 65th Street in Emeryville. Every Tuesday in January, the Ed Fund will receive a percentage of sales, so you just have to stop by, make a purchase, and it's just that simple, you'll get a portion of it. So thank you to our partners at Farley's and to Daniel Embree, who is the manager of that location. I would also like to recognize our faithful volunteers who gave their time and services to the youth of Emory Unified School District in the form of tutoring, mentoring, and in other areas. For those of you that do not know, one of the Ed Fund's many programs, areas, is to manage the school district's volunteer program, which means we process all applications, we check statuses on Megan's Law, we verify TB testing, conduct reference checks, coordinate fingerprinting, and their placement. Today- checks, coordinate fingerprinting, and their placement. Today, I'm pleased to announce for the fiscal year 2012-2013 that there were a total of 117 volunteers placed in the schools. The state of California values volunteers' time at $22.14 an hour. There were a total of 6,911 hours that were reported to the Ed Fund, which means a total value of contributed time at over $153,000. So, great work to all of our volunteers and to the Emeryville community that might be watching. Now, if you're watching by television or YouTube, thanks to Ken, we would, if you would like to make an unrestricted donation or restricted donation for our scholarship program, our mini-grants program, or to wellness or to any other area, you can simply write the Emory Ed Fund at 1275 61st Street here in Emeryville, or you can visit emoryed.org/donate. All donations are tax deductible. Thanks to our continued supporters. We wouldn't be able to do it without you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from Board or Council members?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Powell for all his great and hard work that he's doing on behalf of the Emory Ed Fund and for the school district. You're really out there pounding the pavement and really trying to get all those, you know, interested into our, you know, into our schools. So, I just wanted to let you know, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Other comments? Any public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item, which is COC report from Mr. Roush.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is this thing on?
Yes.
Okay. Try it this way. So, thanks again for having me. I will start off by echoing Superintendent Lindo's thoughts about the study session that we had, the joint study session between the COC and the school board. I, too, and my, my members on my committee, also echoed that it was very positive, very upbeat, and very helpful, good exchange of ideas. The primary purpose was to talk about transitions, particularly Roy's. We did meet afterwards as a COC. We had our regular COC meeting right after the study session and had an opportunity to digest all the great information that we had. And what I thought I'd do is share with you tonight some of the highlights from that COC meeting that we had right after the study session. The first was, or is, soliciting and retaining student members to the COC. Now, I know you're spoken for, but we are properly admiring and very jealous of the fact that you have two. But we're going to find our two, rest assured. I have met with Corey Westler and have started to lay the groundwork, I think, for a good onboarding process for the students. As you know, it's a complicated set of issues that we deal with on the COC, from project management to community engagement, to financial expenditures and bond measures and all of that kind of stuff. So, we want to make sure that the students who do join our committee and have full voting rights are well-informed, and it's, the information is presented to them in ways that are easy to understand. Sometimes, we, you know, have to spend a little bit of time ourselves getting to that place. And also, thinking of ways for them to participate in a very meaningful way, not just to sit there and sort of nod their heads, but to provide us with information and also for us to give them good information that helps them be a part of the committee. So, my next step is to meet with Corey and two members of her team to get even more detailed on the planning right now. We have no timetable yet, although we anticipate hopefully having them join us early in 2014. So, hopefully, that meeting between me and Corey and her people will happen next week. And I'll have something to report back to the COC in our January meeting. We also thought that it's very, very important for us to continue on with our liaison and working group, work that we do particularly around finances. Charlie Schuman, as you know, meets with Mark Benet to go over the financials in a very thorough and detailed way. And then Charlie reports out to us at COC meetings what he's seeing and some of the highlights from Mark's presentation. I thought it would be good if I joined the next meeting in January to get sort of dipped into that fascinating world of financial analysis. And hopefully, Mitch Fine will be able to join us as well. Mitch, as you know, has a very keen, very keen mind, very observant, and asks really, really good questions. So, it'd be great to have him join us as well. I'm meeting with Dave Gallagher this week, I think on Wednesday, Dave. And it's an informal meeting just between me and him. And I think maybe Roy will be there and Debra, too. But just to kind of go over what the game plan looks like for 2014 going forward. I'm particularly interested in his perspective on reporting and how he plans to provide us with information. And the COC also had some ideas about formats, particularly graphical ones that have lots of pictures, that are clear and accurate, that really describe where we are in terms of project milestones, where we are in terms of expenditures. And I thought, once we had something well structured, that it might be good for me to come back at one of these meetings and share with you the reports that we look at, the process that we go through to keep ourselves fully informed of the project. So, you sort of have window into the processes that we use. So, hopefully, you'll find that helpful. So, that's about it. Those were kind of the three things that I wanted to touch on. Before we transition into questions that you might have, this being Roy Miller's last city schools meeting, right, Roy? Yes. I did want to say that Roy has been a really indispensable part of our COC. You know, we've been through a lot over the last several years. And Roy's always been there. He has been, you know, obviously, a great source of information. We've always come away impressed with his professional and technical competence. But also, as you know, and I'm speaking to the choir, there's a kind of a thoughtfulness and a patience and a graciousness to Roy that's very rare. It's a very fine thing. And I know, Dave, you're looking forward to coming into this project. We will miss Roy tremendously. And not just because of what he brings to the project in terms of all of his competence and all of his knowledge, but also in terms of his very fine character. So, I just wanted to say that publicly. And Roy, thank you so very much for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you for that comment. And any questions or comments from the council or board members?
I just had a quick question. If you could remind me of the open positions to the categories for COC members?
Yeah, it's, uh...
I'm, I'm doing some recruiting, but I need to make sure I'm doing it right.
Taxpayer or the, and parent of current student, yes. What is it, the tax, not taxpayer, but Taxpayers Association, thank you.
And parent of current student, was that the other?
Yes.
So, it's a parent of a current stu, a parent of a current student, Taxpayers Association member, and what's the third?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, great.
Yeah.
And then the two student positions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I'd like to thank Roy, too, for his years of service. I meant, he was totally and truly put on the hot spot on this project. And, you know, he knit, was always unfostered. I meant, even I couldn't foster him. But I meant, I meant, well, he didn't let on that I fostered you. But I meant, he had vision, he had consistency, he had messaging, he had commitment. And I truly will appreciate the time and effort that you put into this project. You did a great job, Roy. Thank you very much.
Superintendent, are, at some point, are we going to have a more formal or appropriate time to thank Roy?
There's a surprise, there's a surprise coming.
Okay. It's, so it's not happening, Roy?
Not tonight. It's, there's a surprise coming.
All right. That, that would be fitting.
So, I have to make that speech again? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
You, too, Tom.
Be happy, too. But what I, what I will tell you, though, is that I had a long, we had a long talk with Roy today in our cabinet meeting. And Roy has essentially requested, even though we, even though you don't know that something's coming, Roy, we, he has requested that any gifts, flowers, cards, anything like that, be given to the Emory Ed Fund. And we have a scholarship in his name to help support the scholarship for the students at the high school.
Any other comments at this point on the COC report? Any members of the public wish to comment on the COC report, report? Okay. Thank you. Our next item is the ECCL Transition Plan.
Yes. So, thank you very much. The board has heard some, all of this, actually. And as you, as I mentioned earlier, and as Tom mentioned, we had a study session with the COC to go over the transition. And so, what I wanted to do tonight was just really give you high level what the, what the key areas are related to the transition. As you know, as everyone has said, you know, Roy Miller, you know, for the past, past 10, 11 years, has worn probably multiple, multiple hats. And he and I sat down and we, we looked at, you know, where those hats rest. And really, it, his work sort of falls into three categories. And one of the things that we have done, and we've begun to do already, was to essentially bifurcate his job responsibilities into, into these two roles. And I wanted to talk with you a little bit about, about those tonight. The first is, I wanted to introduce to you and to the, to the Emeryville community, Dave Gallagher. And Dave is, was, is a retired project manager from the Hayward Unified School District, who has many, many years of experience in building, in school construction in particular. And so, he is going to take that piece over for us to begin the, to begin the transition. And in fact, he started that transition on December 1st, December 2nd, actually, with Roy. So, he's getting up to speed on every, every aspect of the project and coordinating that. The other piece is the coordination and the relationship with the CBO and the CBO's office, related to just the ECCL budgets, also the coordination with all of the consultants and outside consultants and CM firm that we have, MAC5, right now, that's working on our project. One of the things during the course of this discussion about Roy's transition is that we decided that it would be really good, because, just because of the sheer scope of the project, to go out and have a, an RFP, a Request for Proposals, from various CM firms, so that we could take a look at the, the full scope of work that is associated with, you know, with managing a project of this, of this caliber. And so, Dave is going to be working with, with our CBO and me to put that RFP together. And we'll be launching that in, in February, probably January, February timeframe. So, we'll be bringing more information related to that back to you. The third part of Roy's job, or just say the other half, if you will, of his sort of monitoring duties related to the Emeryville Center of Community Life, have to do with the community aspect of this and the community services aspect of this, and the full-service community aspect of this. And Roy has held work essentially of a full-service community school coordinator, as it, as it has related to the relationship with the city, as it's related to our MOU agreements of the past, the joint occupancy agreement that we're working on right now with, with all of you, and community convenings and engagements related to whether it's architectural designs, whether it's library consultants, whether it's health clinic consultants, landscape architects, and different things like that. So, what we're going to do now is, from the programmatic side, as you heard the information from the Children's Aid Society about the need for this position, just in terms of best practice, is rather than have the full scope of the conversation now, we thought that this, this unit of work warranted its own conversation and its own set of details that the construction side has had with us. And that's really what we're focused on right now, since we've started abatement and demolition. And so, we're going to be bringing back to you in January and in February, a series of conversations related to the unit of work that is associated with the full-service community school coordinator. So, this group with the board will be looking at job descriptions. You all will be engaged in conversations about what a full-service community school coordinator's role would be for ECCL. Is this new work? Is this work that other people are holding in, in, you know, either in your organization or in ours, our organization? How is that going to essentially work? And we're going to be bringing all of that, Sabrina and I talked about that this morning, and we're going to bring you, be bringing all of that information back, back to you to have a much fuller, deeper conversation within the context of the JOA or outside the context of it. We'll have to decide, we'll have to decide all of that. So, that's where we are. Again, we're, we've separated sort of his three units into two, two areas. One has to do with construction. The other has to do with full-service community schools. We're going full-core press with the, with the construction piece right now. We're on a very short timeline, as you know. Part of our bond funds were from qualified school construction funds, Q-Skip bonds. So, we have to make sure that we, we get this work moving as quickly as we can, which it is. It's in motion. And then the second part, again, we will engage all of you in conversations in January and February about your desire to fill this position, how we fill this position, what the job description and the work is, whether it's a shared position or a position owned by the district or, or, you know, us together. Those are the things that we'll talk about. So, but before we, before you ask any questions about any of that, what I'd like to do is ask Dave Gallagher to come up to the podium and introduce himself to everyone. And...
Before that happens, I have to leave, because I have a, a family childcare situation I need to go deal with.
So, you have a question?
So, I'm going to have to excuse myself. No, I don't have a question. I'm just letting you know that Member Atkins can take you over.
Okay, great. Okay. So, so Dave, welcome. We know that you've already hit the ground running with your work. Maybe you could tell everybody a little bit about your background and the work that you've been engaged in thus far and...
Well, first of all, thank you both to the city and the school district for giving me the opportunity to come and serve. I, I did retire at the end of last year. I was with three different school districts doing this type of work, managing these types of projects, very similar to this, for, throughout my entire career. And retired from that at the end of 2012. I've been working since then as a part-time consultant to an architect firm. And just, I knew the superintendent that I worked for at Hayward, just through word of mouth. They knew I was available. Dr. Lindo knew I was available, gave me a call. And I think it's an excellent fit. It's, it's an excellent fit for me, and I hope it's an excellent fit for you. I have been spending the last week doing a couple things. The first thing is I've been trying to clone as much of Roy as possible. I can't clone his body, and I can't clone all of his brain, but I can clone the parts of the brain that, that I need to clone. So, there's some continuity with this project. And so, I've been in that process with Roy. Thank you for allowing me to do that, Roy. And I've also been reading the, just the tremendous amount of information that's available on the project, drawings and specifications that were prepared by your architect. They did a very excellent job. And I've been able to understand a lot of it, the nuts They did a very excellent job and I've been able to understand a lot of it, the nuts and bolts of the project through studying those. You, you selected the largest and most reputable construction company in the nation, really, to build your facility and so I've been studying their information, getting to know them. So many things that you have done, that Roy has done and, and, and people in this room have done, I am so impressed with. I've been managing these types of projects for school districts for 30-plus years and you're doing a lot of things here that I always wished that I would, had a chance to do. So, I want to do some, build on what you have done because my experience has been keeping projects on schedule, on budget, and really establishing and building good relationships with everybody during the process. And I've had a fair amount of success in all of that and I hope to bring those abilities to you to continue your project's success and, and building on the great job that Roy and others have done up to this point. So, thanks so much for allowing me to come help you out. I am retired, so I can't work full-time for the next two years, but I have an awful lot of time that I can contribute and certainly bridge this time period between Roy's departure and a long-term having some sort of CM firm onboard. Because of the strength of the Turner Group you have and the strength of the architect firm you have, I think it would be good to tailor-make this CM role. You don't need to replicate the good things that both of those companies are already doing, but you need, need to fill in those gaps that are left even by those two companies and, and I'll help identify those gaps and, and hopefully tailor-make your CM firm to what your needs are for when I'm no longer able to, to serve for you.
Thank, thank you, Dave. Are there any questions from, of Mr. Gallagher?
I just was, first question was, what other school districts did you work for?
Worked for Mount Diablo Unified and Temecula Valley Unified in Southern California.
And tell me about the model that we have the least leaseback. So, you feel on the strength of that and the guaranteed maximum price? That's one of the reasons that, that your time doesn't have to be full-time?
That's a great delivery method, the delivery model. At Hayward Unified, we built $200 million of projects, five new schools over a four-year period using the lease-leaseback exclusively, just finished that up at the end of 2012. And yes, it very, it's very, you can be very lean and manage it if you have the right lease-leaseback entity onboard, which you do with, with Turner. So, I'm very much a fan of the lease-leaseback model. I think it was a wise decision you made early on to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
If you have somebody else in the audience-
Well, first off, Superintendent, I just want to thank you for finding someone who can fill the, the gaps, at least in part, so, of what Roy's been doing. So, thank you for not wasting any time in getting that, that process going. I did see a, a hand in the public, so if you have a question, come up to the mic.
Thank you. Thank you, Ruth. And I want to just say thank you for all the good wishes from the council and the board during my little absence. And welcome, Dave. I'm Rod Wong and I'm a member of the COC, if I remember correctly. Your, your experience is impeccable and I was wondering, have you had a chance to do a combined campus like what this ECCL is trying to accomplish in your experience? And could you tell us a little bit about that?
Not to the extent-
You have to come up to the mics on television.
Yeah, just-
What'd you say, Jim?
Okay. All right. Not to the extent that you're doing it here, I'm not sure that there's many people have, have done everything to the extent that you're doing here, combining full K-12 with community uses. But I do have a lot of experience with joint-use facilities between cities and school districts. I did that in Temecula, I also did that in Mount Diablo here in the, in the Concord area. And so, not to the extent, but I, but I understand the joint use and the joint occupancy and the importance of cooperating with partners.
If that's it, is there more in the transition plan you want to say at this point?
No, just, we're just going full steam ahead and everybody's working really hard to make sure that this is as seamless as possible.
All right. So, this, we're up to the program development piece of it, I guess, and Roy?
Yep.
Ariana Carrida?
Yeah. So, what, we, at the last City Schools meeting, I was not here. I think I was at a workshop or out of town, but there was a request to give an update on the programmatic development work that was approved by the City Schools Committee back in 2011, 12. So, I have our Director of Educational Services, Anna Carrida Allen here, and Roy Miller. And I also have to say, I believe we're going to be asking Cindy Montero and Juliet Dunn to, to chime in on this work. So, they'll give an update on the project thus far.
So, I'll start us off and then Ms. Allen and Ms. Dunn will chime in in a bit. Here, I'm going to do a quick recap of how the program development work came to be and then run through the City Schools authorization, wow, let's see, two years ago for that work and a little, kind of a summary report on where those contracts stand and the expenditures that we've made in that regard. And then Ms. Allen and Ms. Dunn will bring you up to date on the actual program development content itself because it's really, and Ms. Montero may also want to contribute to that conversation to talk a little bit about what the outcomes and what the benefits of, of having done that work are.
Roy, it looks like she may, may have to cue that up. Why don't we use the PowerPoint presentation that everyone has before them to review the first three slides and-
Okay.
Yeah, I think she's got to get the disc.
I can start at least with the, with the background. About two years ago today, actually, the City Schools Committee authorized a, a program development effort. In kind of mid to late 2011, there was a whole series of meetings where staff and others brought to City Schools the rationale for what this program development work is all about. And we had two or three sessions with you where the consultants appeared and described the, the contracts that they were going to put together. Staff appeared and, and told you what it was that we wanted to accomplish with the work and the City Schools ultimately authorized a set of contracts to be awarded and we set a budget with you. And the stipulation for that work with City Schools was that the funds, and I was incorrect when I said this at the last meeting, the funds actually were to come from MOU1, not from MOU2. And so, what I did was I went back and pulled the slide from that late 2011 City Schools meeting. This is that slide. What we brought to you was two phases of work, a schematic design phase and a design development phase work. The dollar numbers are recapped there for you. This particular slide said that we were seeking, we had gotten some grant support for this work, which did actually occur, and we were seeking others, other support for the work through the I-3 proposal that we did and we were not ultimately successful with the I-3 grant application, but we did pursue that to, to conclusion. We actually wrote the grant and made the submittal to the federal government. And then finally, the, the funding was to be allocated from the remaining unspent balance of MOU1. So, that's the, those were the parameters that City Schools set for us. We had, when we presented this, we had proposals for contracts from five consulting groups. There was a proposal from the Children's Aid Society, who you heard from at last month's meeting. There was a proposal from the National Equity Project, a proposal from Partners in School Innovation, a proposal from the MIG Group and a proposal from the California School-Based Health Centers Association. And this is a recap that I just put together for you to, to show what the contract status is with each of these groups. In some of the cases, we completed the work with the consultant. In some of the cases, as the work went forward, we didn't either need all of the scope that they had come to us with or we found out in the process that we could deal with that in another way. So, we actually modified downward their original contract. In some cases, we never have yet spent the balance of the work, so there's still funds available. And in some, work is done, probably won't need to hire them again. The National Equity Project, the dollars that, that were allocated to them were spent and Ms. Allen can tell you about that. Partners in School Innovation, that was one of the instances where in actually doing the work, we discovered that we could modify their contract downward. So, the amount that was spent is actually less than the, the original contract amount, but their contract was modified to reflect the lower amount. Children's Aid, that's a case where a portion of the dollars have been spent and they are still available to us and, and are actually continuing the work with us and they talked to you about that a month ago. With MIG, we did not spend the, the full amount of their contract. There is still a balance there, but it's probably another case where we can adjust their contract downward to match that lower amount because we have not found it necessary to, to rehire them for this purpose. And then with the California School Health Centers Association, that's a contract that was executed in full and so we've spent those dollars. We obtained a little less than $30,000 in foundation support for the work. So, all in all, we spent about $150,000 and there's a little over $50,000 remaining from the funds that City Schools originally allocated. That's a quick recap. I'm going to let Ms. Allen and Ms. Dunn and to the extent she wants to, Ms. Montero, fill you in on, on exactly what that program development work has done for the, the process of our project.
Good evening. And so, the first, first I'll talk about the collective partner work. So, just to understand that this is a snapshot of a lot of the work that, you know, went into the, the, supporting the leadership team in terms of the ECCL work. So, there was initial planning for alignment of frameworks, design plans and training. So, you'll see a lot of overlap, but that was intentional because the goal is to provide each one of our groups, which I'm, in which, and when I state that, it's the educational piece, the wellness and city services. And so, I'm sure you all have seen that Venn diagram where you see the three entities and then the overlaps in terms of the work we've had to do. So, some of the work was part of what, where those overlaps are and also each individual entity, some of the organizations helped us in that manner. So, in terms of the collective partner work in the organizations, they had initial planning for alignment of frameworks, design plans and trainings and they helped develop transition teams, school staff and our city staff to build leadership and facilitation capacity. So, with that in particular, particularly, particularly, the, the intent was not to do, necessarily do all of the workforce, but in order to sustain and continue the work, it's important to build capacity and training for those of us who have to lead that work in those, in the, in those three entities. Planning with ECCL team and consultant partners, train administrative leads and facilitators. So, some of the essential questions that came up for us was, what does it mean to lead this work, particularly those of us who have to? So, what tools do we need to actually lead this work and continue to lead it and to sustain it? What data is needed and collected? What capacity and bandwidth is needed to sustain this work? What frameworks are needed to implement this work and what schematic designs or program designs are necessary to align and implement this work? So, a lot of it, again, is building our own foundation and our own structures in order for us to deliver this, deliver work of ECCL, the vision of ECCL. So, I'll go through each partner organization and talk about their scope of work briefly and then what are some of the next steps in terms of what we are doing as a staff to help move forward. So, in Children's Aid Society, you all received a trend, a presentation and I think at the end of it, a member, Wes, asked the question about sustainability and what would that work look like with staff? And so, this is an attempt to show you that work and again, to restate what Mr. Miller just said, is that the only organization that we may continue to work with is Children's Aid Society, however, for the other organizations, the work and scope has been done. So, with Children's Aid Society, their scope of work is to, is for full-service community schools training in terms of what those functions are and what the strategy is so we can get a better understanding of that and how to actually lead that within a theory of change. They also provided a needs and assets assessment to kid training. So, in order for us to continue to do the work, what kind of data should we always continuously collect to make sure that the programs that we implement are effective? Out-of-schools time and ECCL training, so assessment and design, some of the work that they did was to really focus on some of the overlap and what would out-of-school time look like? So, that's the time where schools and both city services intersect. And then developing a shared vision and supporting schematic design of ECCL. So, in those next steps and transitions, we want to apply the community school strategy to current and future programs in schools, wellness and community services. Include stakeholders in the community schools framework. So, what does it look like in terms of their roles and responsibilities and not necessarily just stakeholders around the table giving input, but actually what specifically is their role and what is the responsibility when you, when you are thinking about a community, not only community schools, but also a community's organization? So, what are the roles of those, you know, who don't have children in the schools or what are the roles of our seniors or roles of those who are single adults who don't have children, volunteers, et cetera? So, it's really looking at the, at the scope of those stakeholders and our partnerships. And then also, next steps are supporting the coordination of services and then assist with ECCL governance and operations. So, I know that Sarah, who presented to you all last month, she talked a little bit about the governance and operations and that, that will have to be something that's very orchestrating, although I know there's joint use, I mean, joint use, what is that? MOUs that are happening, but also to think about the roles and responsibilities of the people who are actually engaged in it and how do those, how, how would that work in terms of operations versus like technology or maintenance, et cetera? So, that's some other work they can support us on. In terms of the next organization, National Equity Project, so their goal or their scope of work was transitional leadership training and capacity building. So, really focusing on those who lead this work in terms of education, wellness, and particularly those two and then also community services, city services. But educational, speculation, schematic design, equity analysis and community service audit. The other part is program design, planning for ECCL training and structure. So, so really building our toolkit to hold this work and think about what designs that we need in order to, again, sustain. Change process model, school and family partnerships, so really thinking about what those partnerships are. Can we sustain them? What do they bring to the table? And is it, because we also got into, we were also in the process, I think, prior where we formally would just, anyone who would come to our door, we almost opened up our arms and we said, "Come on in." But that's not necessarily the best way to think about providing services because it all, it becomes a burden after a while when you have so many that are duplicating services and then you're, you are not, you're spending more time managing versus actually being able to provide the service for our youth and for our community. And then also in the classroom, the focus on teaching- And then also in the classroom, the focus on teaching, learning, and equity. So this is where we've studied what our best practices are, and that I think I've presented to both CLC and to City Schools in terms of our story and transition, where we started with our K-6 transitioning into K-8, and then 912. And then just looking at the scope of work in terms of full-service community school structure. So what does that look like, a school structured, when you're just focusing on the school and the wraparound services? So next steps in transition is to utilize the program design to align current and future programs, specify, specific to ECCO vision, to utilize the design and implement current and future ECCO work collaborations. So there's the programs, but there's also the collaborations. To apply Joyce, the Joyce Epstein's framework for parent involvement and engagement, so to really, so in terms of community schools, what's the framework that we really need to engage and bring in parents? And then apply best practices for teaching and learning, and also community-based service learning. So in terms of when our students transition to the after-school program, what is it that they're really focused on versus just tutoring, but actually bringing in a service-based learning that can encompass many learning, many educational components? And also, I didn't state it on here, but how do you also bring in youth voice in terms of protocols and inclusion? Besides, while we have our students on our, our panels or our boards, but really, how does, how do we actually take student voice where you actually see changes in our programs and in our services for students? I know I talk a lot, but any questions about those, or you all just want me to run through it and then ask questions?
Oh, just, why don't you continue?
Okay, okay. So the next organization, Partners for School Innovation. So this is one of the organizations where we had to reduce scope of work, and it wasn't because we believed that the organization could not provide it, but I think we ran into an area of just bandwidth, particularly, specifically when our high school transitioned from the site on San Pablo to the interim site. And so that was just a lot of work for staff to, to, to hold. And particularly at the high school, the, the teaching staff also changed. So what was beneficial from the Partners, from Partners for School Innovation was the cycles of inquiry. So how do you actual, so some of the scope of work, support the ECCO transition team and their use of database cycles of inquiry, provide leadership and methods for integrating, analyzing, and utilizing data to the design process, and provide research on similar school designs, and sharing the best practices with respect to education specifications. So with Partners, it's really helping us think about what is our cycle, like, how can we use cycle inquiry and data and actually make it public, and make it user-friendly, where not only staff understands it, but students are able to have conversations about it, as well as our parents and community members, besides just our standard state tests, which, which now you all know that we'll be transitioning to the Common Core from California State's testing. So our next step is to identify multiple opportunities to share the data, again, as a learning experience, and have collective discussion, discussions and decisions with all stakeholders, and that includes those who may not have children in our schools. And then to identify capacity and bandwidth in terms of strengths and needs in our data base cycles of inquiry that are utilized to improve teaching, learning, and community services. And then the next organization, Ms. Dunn will come and speak about that, because she was, she had more, this is, the California School Health Centers Association, actually worked a lot with our wellness department.
Basically, we decided, when we first looked at this, when we were thinking about having a school health center, was, what do we need it for? Who needs it? What do people want? So we decided we needed to put together some kind of a very formal survey and data collection. So one of the things that we partnered with was the California School Health Centers Association, who's done this all over the nation. And we also talked to UCSF, which is the group that actually, that sat down with us over a period of several months, and put together survey information, not only with our students, with our parents, with the seniors, with community partners. And we went out, and they showed us how to put surveys together, how to figure out what was necessary, because we needed to answer those questions, especially when we were looking at, with, working with Roy on the design project with the architects. What do we need? How do we need it? What can we use for sustainability? What do people want? What would they buy into? And all of this was part of our secondary data review. So again, we went through student survey, school staff survey, parent, community members, and it's important to realize that our parents are community, and our community members are community members as well. So when we looked at the surveys, we had to create different survey mechanisms for each one of those. Key informant interviews, city school board presentations, because when we came back with the information, we did report here, as well as at the school board, to let them know where there were the concerns of, where there were concerns from folks, and what people really needed. One thing we found is dental. Folks said, "We don't have dental services. We want dental services." And that was very key, because we also found out from our medical leader, dental services bring in a lot of money. And it's a very good way of utilizing this, the, the school-based health center, and it's not even, it's the community-based health center at this point, in terms of bringing in sustainability and monies, and a service people want. And that's what we, we went towards. And then the data analysis, analysis and report presentation, all of that was part of this particular service that they gave us. Utilizing that information, we utilized it not only in the design process, but just recently, Lifelong, who's our medical lead, we worked with them on several grants, and we used this information, so it had legs of its own, to identify what we were looking at, to identify how we were going to be moving together with, Cindy Montero was there at a lot of those meetings, moving together with city services so that we could provide what we needed for sustainable grants, not only from Alameda County, but from other places that we could get money, get funding. I keep saying get money. We're still gonna continue to work with UCSF. They've invited us back, and when we get further funding to do some in-depth work on needs and assessment, because this is gonna be an ongoing process. You know, we've identified some things, but where else can we go? Because this is a national movement. A lot of medical services are going to be held at schools for the community, as well as for the schools. So I heard, I saw an article, and they were talking about hospitals on school campuses, and I went, "Okay, that's maybe a little bit more than we're biting into," but those are some of the things that people are looking at. And in order to implement community schools and community-based health center programs, we use this information, and we use it all the time, and we will update it as we go forward to see what works and what doesn't work. So those are some of the things that we moved with that particular funding point.
And our last organization's, MIG Incorporated. And so if Ms. Montero wants to add anything, if it's fine, okay, the, so the scope of work was to build capacity development of the leadership team and collaborative work, particularly in the out-of-school time. So those overlap times was after-school times, and so where the city services and school services address or provide, provide the services for our students or youth. And then capacity development of the city's community services leadership team, so thinking about services collectively or broadly, meaning what are the services from students who are preschool, from zero to five, to those who are school-aged, to those who are young adults, as well as our seniors. And then providing overarching program framework outlining the relationships of, what does it look like in terms of education, the enrichment and recreation, and health and wellness? And thinking about a full-service community hub. So again, this is an area where we, where we are, where we are thinking about ages zero, you know, I hate to say to, what's that they say, the cradle to the grave? I can't stand that. But zero and beyond, but, but really thinking about every, everyone, because I know a lot of times when you hear community school services, sometimes the, there's the question of, what about the seniors? What about the adults who don't have children? So, so again, how are they engaged in this work? And then providing the community program design components, and then what MIG did is they assisted Children's Aid Society align in terms of, particularly in the out-of-school time work. So I think the next steps, in terms of transition there is just utilize the framework, and the design components, and aligning those cross-sections of schools, city, or community services, and also our wellness. And so all of those components, again, those intersecting, when you think about the Venn diagram, what do those intersections look like, and how do we implement program from those areas? So again, I know this is a snapshot and not in a full detail, but are any questions, comments, discussion?
Are there any comments? Any comments? Thank you both. I, I hope that the absent committee members will watch this afterwards, because you responded to their needs, and they're not present tonight, so in terms of their questions. But I want to thank you for that, and for filling us in in more depth about the different contracts that have been brought to bear on this whole project. So, thank you very much. So... Oh, yeah.
I'll throw in a question. For, as mentioned in that second slide, I guess, about, maybe it was the third, sorry, where we have balance remaining? Yeah, that's it. That's the phrase. So if there are organizations from a program, from a programmatic standpoint, I guess, is that then gonna be a source of funding for, you know, if any future need, or if we need to reengage, you know, one of these organizations will be able to tap into those dollars, because we've allocated them from a program standpoint, I guess?
That's entirely up to City Schools. I hope that would be the case. I think it would be great, great if that were the case. And also, please keep in mind, moving forward, that you still have Children's Aid under contract, and there's still a, a future scope of work that we can define to continue the work with, with that group in particular.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the public on this item? All right, see none. That takes us to our second to last item, which is rescheduling our January meeting. Did staff have any proposals?
Usually we'll do the second Thursday of the month. It seems to fit into the city and the school's calendar, but you might want to look at that.
Is that acceptable to everybody else?
What's the date? Only? The night? I don't think I have a problem.
That's the night after our board meeting.
You're back.
Just in time to adjourn. So it's two nights. Yes, so we'll plan on the, on the ninth for the January City Schools Committee. And I was a little slow on the uptake in terms of committee member comments, but I'll take a chair's prerogative as we head towards adjournment, just to publicly thank Roy for all that you've done for this. I think I've met you shortly after ESAC did its Youth Master Plan. And boy, we have moved mountains since then. And just in terms of the dozen years, decade of, of doing this, and not only are you, did you lay the groundwork, groundwork for us to have a state-of-the-art building that both jurisdictions desperately needed, but I just want to say too, that you never forgot that it was about serving and enabling people. And when we went through our competitive processes for the construction company team, and also for the architectural team, just how inclusive you were, how you brought people along, and although I'm forgetting his name, you took a student under your wing who got totally excited about architecture, didn't even know about architecture before this process. And, you know, you've influenced this young man's life, you know, for the, for the rest of his life. He was forever changed by this project. And so you've always kept service to people, and helping people reach their potential, and understanding fully that this ECCO project isn't just about buildings, it isn't just about programs, although we've had reports on both aspects, but it's really about the synergy and the, the, some being greater than the, the parts. I'm saying that badly, but you get the idea. So, so I just want, I want to adjourn, just to thank you so much. It's been a rocky road with lots of turnover, from state takeover to regaining local control through many superintendents, you know, through all of this. And you've just been rock-solid, keeping our equity goals in mind, and that I think first got articulated when we hired Tony Smith, not as superintendent, but as a change agent to, to the schools so many years ago. So, and, and it's about, it's about raising the water that everybody is on, and not just rewarding the people who are already performing at the top, but it's about reducing disparities and, and equity. So I, and that's what this project is about. It's about really serving, when the, when the folks who are the furthest behind get to catch up, then the whole community is strengthened from that project, process. So I just want to adjourn in a lot of thanks to you for seeing this through. I hope you'll come for the groundbreaking after the demolition, and I hope you'll come back when we have a ribbon cutting. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.